It is 7:01 PM and I will now call this meeting of the Cecil Township Planning Commission to order. First on the agenda is the approval of minutes from February 15th. Lauren, I understand you'll likely have to abstain.
That's correct.
As such, are we able to still vote on that or do we need to table it?
I think we should need to table that till next time.
Yes, to make sure that we have the appropriate vote. Okay, would you like to make a motion?
I move to table the Planning Commission minutes dated February 15th, 2024.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Okay, we have a review of some previous decisions.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to mention to you that application 2024-0001 was requested to table tonight. They will be back to see us in April.
Do they have an extension already approved?
The extension, um, the extension was dated 3/8 and it's till June 15th, so we have plenty of time.
Perfect. With that in mind, um, do we have a motion regarding application 2024-0001, done subdivision number one?
I'll make a motion to table application 2024-0001, done subdivision number one. Presuming that they have an approved extension.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Under old business number two. Application 2024-0004, 275 Technology Parking Addition Site Plan.
Madam Chair, they requested today that this be tabled as well to get a few more pieces of information together.
I think they'll be helpful if they don't have everything because I know there were a lot of comments last time.
Correct.
Okay, do I have a motion for application 2024-0004?
I move, I move to table application number 2024-0004, Technology Parking Addition Site Plan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Under new business. It's my understanding that application 2024-0008 has requested an extension as well.
Yeah, I was contacted by John Koski at about 5 o'clock today and he said that, uh, he, he wanted to check into a couple more things before he moved forward with the plan. He expects there to be some minor revisions and he'll be back next month, so, uh, we have plenty of time. This was just a new application, so we're good on the time.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
Make a motion to table application 2024-0008, Koski Barn Subdivision and Consolidation Plan.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. And we have another application for new business, 2024-0009, Level Up Pickleball Camps Land Development. Uh, and that has also been requested for an extension, has it not?
It, it has. Uh, so they were able to obtain their conditional use approval from the Board of Supervisors and they really tried to hustle to get this project completed. I would hope, I was hoping that they would be here at least to present to the Planning Commission tonight. Uh, but essentially in the Teudory Industrial Park, I'll call it, over, uh, crossing the elementary school, they're proposing to subdivide a piece of property, which you've already seen. And they're building a building on top of it. You guys saw the conditional use presentation, I think.
Yes, we did.
So they submitted all the land development stuff, but there are a lot of, a lot of issues with the plans trying to get them done that quickly. So I suggested to, to the owner that there was not going to be any chance that they would get approved tonight. So he just requested to be tabled and he'll be back out with corrected plans next month.
Okay, and he's been communicative, communicative and working with you?
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And, uh, there, it's a new application also, so there's no extension required.
Okay, well, do I have a motion for application 2024-0009?
I move to table application number 2024-0009, Level Up Picklebell, Pickleball Camps Land Development.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. The next order on our agenda is for ordinances and amendments and Cecil Township ordinance number 92011, Oil and Gas Development. Um, we are fortunate to have our solicitor who wrote the ordinance here with us this evening. And, um, we will be taking comments from any taxpayers and residents of Cecil Township. So, uh, with that being said, before we do that, is there anything that the board would like to address or comments or questions? Or would you like to hold those until after we hear from our residents?
I, I would personally like to hear from the residents first.
Okay, I agree. Please, when you go up to the microphones, state your name and address.
Kara Sheridan, 58 North The Poly Road. Um, I had just a, I had sent over some recommendations, uh, to the Board of Supervisors. Um, just wanted to kind of highlight the things that I think are of the most importance in this. I guess, could someone answer me this question? What are you, what are you intending to do after this? Are you going to go through this section by section or how, how are you going to handle your portion of, of the review here?
We're a recommending body, so what we do is we will listen to any input from residents, take that into consideration, and then give our recommendation to the supervisors who will then vote on what they would like to do.
So, so you're going to discuss your recommendations today? That, do you already have recommendations in mind or is it, um, you know, something that you do as a follow-up?
Both.
Okay.
We have, we have our thoughts, but we would be remiss not to listen to what residents have to say prior.
Okay, so I had a few things that I, I recommended, I, I think, and maybe, um, Gretchen, you can confirm this, but at least in the draft, I thought I saw, um, we're looking at a thousand feet from a protected structure. Is that what's in there at this time?
Yes, it's the thousand foot setback and we have a map too that shows how that plays out when you apply.
With the overlay map? Okay, can, if you have an electronic copy of that too that someone could send me?
Do we have it?
Possibly.
Uh, we don't have this up yet, but I'll give it to Jack tonight to put up on the website.
Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
I think you have it.
Yeah, I just, I just realized my microphone was off. Um, yes, it's a thousand feet and we do have the map now and, uh, we'll get it up on the website so that people have that in advance of the hearing.
It, it's, it's to be specific, the map is areas that are a minimum of four acres, because that's what it takes to build a pad site. That are a thousand, at least, at least 1,000 feet from a structure.
Is there anything in there specifically around the property line, the distance from a property line in addition to the distance from a protected structure?
It doesn't have to be from a property line because, because theoretically they could work with pro, multiple property owners. We're not going to get that specific to properties themselves.
Okay.
We're just outlining an area where potentially drilling could occur. That's, that's all this is, right? This is, these are the areas that could occur.
Potentially, right.
Potentially.
Correct.
I've seen in other ordinances both an option for, from a protected structure as well as a property line, um, you know, just something to consider.
There is just, um, so you're aware, there also is citing related to the property lines under Section 5B. Let's see. There's also a, a specific section under 5C1, um, about the citing of a wellhead. You have to be closer to the pers, to the, your own protected structure than a protected structure on an abutting property. So for example, the thought there is you can't put it as close as you could on your property, far away from your structure, but then closer to a name.
Right, like the one in my backyard, which is on the exact opposite side of where the property owner lives.
Yes, so there were.
Far as possible.
Yeah, efforts were made to capture that concept.
Okay. Um, what, again, is this thousand feet from the wellhead or is it from the edge of the well pad?
Wellheads shall be located not less than 1,000 feet. That's Section 5B.
Is there, um, there's no express prohibition of drilling in a residential area? The overlay map allows for drilling in all residential areas, is that, or all zones, is that correct?
Right, so this is not a z, a district-based zoning.
Right.
And what happens is you could have areas that overlay that the underlying zoning district is residential. And I do think that in fact plays out, doesn't it, Dan? Uh, there are certainly some areas that overlay are one.
Yeah, anything in white is our one.
Yeah, our one, our.
Yeah.
Our, yeah. So yes.
I just want to make a comment that per the approved, uh, uh, can, um, comprehensive plan, the only zone that was mentioned as being conducive to oil and gas drilling is the industrial zone. There's no mention of, uh, industrial, uh, other than industrial, uh, being conducive. And one of the rights or one of the responsibilities of the, um, township is to ensure that we make recommendations that are in alignment with the comprehensive plan. So I see that as, uh, as a, uh, there's a difference there, right? We're saying in the comprehensive plan, this is good for industrial districts, no mention of that in any of the other districts, um, just an observation. Um, the, can we talk a little bit about the, uh, requirement for, uh, noise mitigation study? That is included in, um, the document? Can you just clarify for me, uh, what the new noise, like if we break it all down, what, what it actually means? Both from, uh, DBA per, perspective as well as the DBC perspective? Because I think lately and, you know, you're at all those meetings, it's, a lot of the concerns are now more around DBCs than they are DBAs. So I just want to make sure we're covered from that point of view.
So the DBC addition was added after this went out for advertising, but the board was very interested in finding the right DBC numbers. We had to talk to an expert to find out what the increases in DBC should be vis a vis increases in DBA. We didn't know if they were going to be, should be different or the same. Um, so at the hearing, um, the board will be proposing that there will be, will be DBC increases added into here as well in addition to the DBA. They are very unique in that we saw no zoning ordinances in Pennsylvania that address DBC in the oil and gas context. However, we found them in Windmill, uh, and, you know, the wind ordinances, which was interesting, so.
Yes.
But we've, we are going to incorporate or the board wants to incorporate them into the ordinance. The concept of noise is being addressed a little differently in this ordinance. Basically, it requires, um, and I've since added a little more detail as well that'll be presented at the hearing. It requires, um, an ambient measurement. By a third party to be taken as opposed to the current ordinance, which allows either an ambient or a default 55 DBA. So it will start with an ambient, um, there is a way to measure it, um, that's the baseline. And then there are increases that are allowed at different intervals and different times of day. And that's, that's the general approach and, and it, and it will be for both DBA and DBC.
That's perfect. I mean, uh, in, in my personal opinion, that real ambient noise measurement is the most important thing that we have addressed with respect to this, this ordinance. Because in my backyard, I'd say my ambient noise level, based on a study that I had done, is around 27 decibels. And they allowed for a default ambient noise level of 55 decibels, which then in turn allows for up to 65 decibels to occur when my real ambient noise level is 30. So, and, and, you know, I understand that it, it has a noise impact and that's something that needs to be dealt with, but it's, you know, and people say, well, well, what about in a city? Or, and, well, that's not where I chose to live. I chose to live where I chose to live because it is a nice, quiet place. And a, a, a delta of upwards of, you know, 40, almost 40 decibels. And, and by the way, as I understand it, every 10 decibels by the human ear is considered to be twice as loud. So it's four times as loud at times as it, that, as it normally is. Um, but to your point also, I'm really happy about the DBCs because for me personally, that is the more troublesome part versus the actual noise you can hear. It's the noise you can feel. It's the noise that moves your body and makes your ears itchy because your eardrums are rattling all the time. Uh, there's some, you know, studies that I've seen about having DB, like consistent exposure to DBCs having, um, impact on your ability to concentrate. And I have experienced that myself as well, uh, as well as general annoyance and, um, you know, even some other things like problems sleeping, uh, and headaches. So, um, I think that's super important, so I'd like to ensure that, that, that stays, stays in there and is, is, is addressed. To your point, I wasn't sure what the right numbers are, like are DBAs and DBCs, like is it the, is the same or different? Or what's a high DBC? Is it 60? Is it 160? And I guess maybe that'll come from the expert you said.
Right, so my general understanding is that the DBC levels typically run a little higher. Um, but our real question was, should those increases differ from the increases we're allowing for the DBA? And I think the answer, we talked to the expert last week, was no, you can use the same interval increases.
Okay.
Um, and if you're using ambient, then the ambient is the ambient for the DBC. But generally, I think he said DBCs run higher on the scale. The numbers do than a DBA, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. Um. The, was there anything addressed in the ordinance regarding adequate insurance and bonding? As I understand it, the way it works today is that an organization, for example, Range Resources, would be required to, uh, have insurance and bonding up to a certain dollar amount. And the way it is today, I think, is that once they have it once, they're covered for all the well pads in the township. Um, I think instead, uh, and maybe I'm wrong about that, but that's how I interpreted it. But rather instead, what it should be is they should be required to carry liability insurance for each well pad. Um, in the event that, gosh, if it, within the term of a year, two things happened and we only have liability, uh, up to a certain amount, which I'd be curious, what, what is the dollar amount on that liability insurance?
It's 25 million per occurrence.
Per occurrence. Okay, so it doesn't matter, it, it doesn't matter that it's in two different places, it's 25 million. Each time there's an issue that, I guess, per occurrence, I'm not real sure what that means.
An incident, an occurrence, an event, um, an insurable event, so it, I, I'll look into that. I didn't think of that consideration, but I think the way this is written is that it's just 25 million per occurrence.
Okay.
I, I don't know if you have to tie them specifically to each pad. I mean, I'll think about that.
Yeah, I wasn't sure because I thought it was like across the board and if it was, you know, I, I don't know. There might be some consideration if it needs to be done separately for each one. That was a question that I had.
Yeah.
Well, it's typ, it's typical when we ask for liability insurance for like our contractors, they work on multiple streets.
Yeah.
That they carry the same insurance policy for every.
Right, I mean, here it's written that it's with respect to operations conducted within the township, so, yeah. It, it would cover everything, I guess, that you're thinking the question is, do you want to have separate insurance on each one so that there's more insurance? But I think because it's per occurrence, it would have the same effect.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I think, yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
If I'm hearing you correctly, yeah.
Thank you. Um, can you talk about what the, if there's anything in the new ordinance that addresses the issue around expiration of a conditional approval? Conditional use approval, because, you know, what, what I, what I'm thinking about, about regarding this is up here, um, you know, Range got approval to do, uh, the well pad, the Augustine well pad. And in between the time when they initially got the approval and when they actually started drilling, 300 additional homes ended up, up there in Windsor Woods. So people were, some of those people up at Windsor Woods were blindsided by the fact that they didn't even know that that was going to be happening. Uh, my recommendation would be that we should require maybe not a reapplication, but, uh, reapproval every year and be allowed to apply if we find something, because, you know, we're still learning new things about the way that this works. If we find things that we need to make modifications to an ordinance, as in this case, I feel like the grandfathered in wells are in trouble with respect to noise and we're not going to be able to get out of this problem. If we every year had them, maybe not go back through the whole reapplication process, but make an application for reentry when they're going to come back the next time to do the second round of drilling. Um, so that we can make sure that if things have changed in the way that the, that township looks or people that are going to be impacted, that they have an opportunity to be informed. I don't know if, if you're understanding what I'm saying, but there's a long period of time that lapsed from when initial approval happened till now. And it's, there's so many things that have changed along the course of time that just having a blanket approval to be able to go in and add additional wells, so it's 14 today, um, and, or it was eight to start and then it became 14. And they can come back in and ask you for, you know, additional wells, oh, up to 14, right? But they started with only wanting to drill five. You know what I'm saying? It's a long period of time. Everyone says it's temporary. It's not temporary. It's, it's years and years of time that elapsed in this situation.
Right, so I, I understand the question. Um, during the approval process by the board, a certain number of wells is approved. They're not all drilled at the same time, so I think in this one example, I forget which pad that is, there were 14 wells that were approved. Of course, they came and did several and then they'll come back and do several more. Um, it, it's an interesting issue that you raised and we did think about it. Um, we, we do have a section under, um, number 41. I don't know if it totally gets to where, uh, you know, you want to get, but it talks about, you know, they, they have to commence within the two years of the conditional use approval. And if they want to extend it, you know, they have to come to the board after notice and hearing for an extension.
I want to make a quick highlight on that specific term of commence, because what happened up at, at the well pad by my house was, they didn't do anything for two years. And then on day 364, they went up and put a shovel in the ground and paved 10 feet of the driveway and that's called commencing. And then it was another several years until they actually did anything, like we need to define what commencing means.
Yeah, it's, it's currently defined as, as getting the grading permit. So, um, obtaining the grading permit and, and beginning that work. Um, it could be defined at different points in time, but that's how it's currently written.
Yeah.
It's, it's typical, so what's interesting about well pad development compared to, you know, other land uses and, and conditional use expirations is that typically it's easy to have a defined point, which is like you need to get a building permit within two years or you need to apply for this permit. And with the oil and gas development, those triggers aren't there. So, you know, the question is, there's really only limited permits that they will come get from the township, the grading permit being one of them, which is usually the beginning of the process. So that's why that was chosen, but, um, it's certainly a point that could be considered if, if they want to, you know, change whatever that trigger point is that, that says.
Starting drilling is what I think it should be. It shouldn't be just having a driveway, because you could have that driveway. So again, we're in the situation where in this scenario, they got approval, they waited two years and then it was another several year, it was at least another year till they actually started doing anything. So if the, the conditional use approval would have expired after a year or after two years, they would have had to go back through the process of adhering to our ordinances. I have an issue with the long, the ability to draw out this process, uh, from a lengthy, for a lengthy period of time.
Yeah, that's something we can certainly consider. I can say the board attempted to impose a condition on one of the pads that required drilling within a certain time period and I believe it was struck down by the judge. Um, but I'll check to see what the judge said about that. I think at that point, he thought it was an infringement into the how, because there's this big line of cases that says basically townships, you can't regulate the how, you can regulate the where. And I, I, but I will check on that to see what the judge said on, on that in particular.
My last one, I promise I'm done. This is the last one. Um, fines, can you talk about what's in there for fines? Because the current ordinance says $1,000, uh, per day, not to exceed $1,000 per day. Can you talk about what, what's in there for fines today?
Yeah, we, I didn't touch that section. That's, that's the same.
Okay, it seems low.
We did get a complaint from Range that it exceeds the MPC allowance, but, um, that's currently.
Okay, thank you.
What it is, and, and we just didn't touch that section.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Kara. Please remember to state your name and address before you speak.
Of course. My name's Janice Blanock, 16 Jupiter Drive. Um, so I'm not here tonight speaking to you as an emotional grieving mother, but as a well-informed, deeply concerned resident of Washington County, Pennsylvania. In 2018, after my son's classmate and baseball team friend was diagnosed with Ewing's sarcoma, I began to really question what was happening. For the last six years, I've talked to many doctors, scientists, authors, investigative scientist, science journalists, specifically one named Justin Noble, who will be releasing, uh, his new book called Petroleum 238, Big Oil's Dangerous Secret and the Grass率s Fight to Stop It. I've gone on frac land tours. I've learned about conventional and unconventional wells, compressor stations, pig stations, uh, injection wells, and I could go on and on. I've participated in studies, spoken to members of the DEP, DOH, Governor Wolf, senators, um, local and state representatives. At the last meeting that I attended, the thing that upset me the most was hearing people say that they're okay with fracking as long as it's done safely. Well, with the help of people that I've previously mentioned, I have five facts on the harms of fracking and after hearing them, you decide.
I do appreciate your input.
No, I will continue with this. I will. You must hear me. I, this, I'm a resident and these are facts that I would like you to hear. You are the Pl, Planning Commission, right?
Yes.
And you work alongside with the Board of Supervisors. So you need to understand what we're dealing with as residents, because these are facts.
I do understand that. What I'm saying is, what do you have to comment on as far as the draft ordinance?
I would like to comment on everything about fracking in, in the town that I've lived in for 30 years. So I would like to just speak this, uh, we'll take, you know, five minutes of your time.
Okay.
I'd appreciate it. Thank you. I have two simple points in those five facts. You cannot bring oil and gas to the surface without bringing incredible amounts of waste to the surface. And two, that waste is toxic, hazardous and radioactive. Fact two, the exemption, because of an exemption, the oil and gas company in ju, industry received more than 40 years ago, known as the Benson and Bevel Amendments to the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act. This oil field waste, no matter how toxic it is, is, no matter how radioactive it is, it's been labeled by the letter of U.S. law as non-hazardous. I think it's important to point out at that time, in 1979, the American Petroleum Institute calculated that this exemption would save the industry $11 billion a year. That number would be vast, be vastly higher today. Fact number three, the brine. A lot more comes to the surface at a well than just the oil and gas. Across the country, oil and gas wells produce 3 billion gallons of oil-filled brine or produced water a day. And while the industry loves to call these innocent names like, you know, brine and produced water, they are filled with toxic levels of salt and have elevated levels of heavy metals like arsenic and lead. And also the radioactive element, radium. The EPA safe drinking water limit for radium is five picacuries per liter, so just remember that number, number five. The Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection has found the average levels of radium in the Marcellus brine to be 9,330 picacuries per liter and as high as 28,500. Right now, not much of the brine in our part of the Marcellus, Marcellus is disposed of down in its inject, injection wells located in Ohio. And it's important to note that in Ohio, the Ohio Department of Nat, Natural Resources has found it has leaked on three different occasions. So they are leaking into conventional gas wells and flowing out at the surf, surface and threatening drinking water. So the fracking industry has. So the fracking industry has actually contaminated conventional oil and gas industry. Number four, the sludge and the sick workers. The industry's waste problems don't end with the brine, because brine has so many solids and sediments suspended in it. The tanks and trucks, impoundments that hold and contain brine also, and also flowback, are going to accumulate sludge. That sludge, according to the EPA's own webpage, can be dangerously radioactive, hundreds to even thousands of times higher above background radiation levels. One of the most little-known parts of this industry is that this waste is often so radioactive it cannot be taken to local landfills. And sometimes it's like stuck in limbo on containers on people's properties. And this has happened right here in southwest Pennsylvania. Even more concerning is the industry will try and downblend this waste, meaning by that meaning they bring the waste to treatment plants and they try to mix it with like, they mix it with corn, with like lime or ground up corn cobs and try to lower the radioactivity levels. Unfortunately, the oil and gas industry typically does not tell their workers. So, you know, they're working around this all day. They're entirely unprotected and may end up with radioactive sludge all over their clothes and can breathe in a significant amount of radioactive dust. Those sludge-covered clothing are often brought home and washed in the family washing machine or at the local laundromat or at the local hotel where they're staying, because they're from out of town. Other plants will try and clean the oil-filled brine, which can lead to contamination for not just workers but surrounding communities. Fact number five, the contamination of our drinking water. Pennsylvania does not have as many injection wells as neighboring Marcellus states. A practice developed in the early years of the Marcellus boom where fracking wastewater was trucked to sewage plants and treatment facilities, which had little or no ability to remove the radioactivity, and this supposedly treated water was discharged right back into the same waterways that we rely on for drinking, including the Monongahela River. While this practice was halted by DEP, an unknown amount of fracking waste was introduced into our environment. Researchers at Penn State have found signatures of fracking waste, including the radioactive element radium in the sediment and streams beside these treatment facilities, indicating fracking contaminants have entered the Pennsylvania environment. My big question, did it also enter the bones and the bodies of our children who are dying from rare cancers? The EPA is concerned about radium, though, in drinking water and has rules. And yet, these rules often require radium to be tested for once every nine years, meaning one single day, once every 3,285 days. So, yes, maybe this isn't about what you planned on hearing tonight or speaking on tonight, but these are facts. And yeah, I am mad, because I lost my son to a rare cancer, but I'm not going to be silenced about the harms of fracking. So if you guys continue to allow fracking to take over our community, which you are doing, you will be responsible for the negative and the detrimental effects to all of this community, our children and our loved ones. And that's like playing Russian roulette. You have children of your own? Think about it. These are the facts. I ask you, I plead with you to consider these facts and make wise choices when you're planning things for Cecil Township. I mean, what's here is here, but you can stop things from progressing. You must stop things from progressing. We're not creating jobs. We're not bringing soldiers home. We're killing our friggin' kids. So thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to make comment? Just so everybody is aware, this is not a hearing. We're just a recommending body.
We wanted to get that out in advance, just so that it has time to be mulled over. But we can also email an updated copy with some of the information that we've learned tonight so far. So, oh geez. My name is Sarah Martik. My address is 2003 White Oak Circle. I very unexpectedly moved to Cecil Township last year in July with my fiance when he found the quote-unquote "perfect backyard." So my fiance and my dog and I packed up from Cranberry Township and moved down here. We jokingly tell people that we bought a backyard and a house came with it. So needless to say, we were really treasuring our time outside, playing with our dog and watching our nephews swim and just enjoying the ability to sit outside and spend time together. But I'm here tonight to give comments as a resident, but also as a concerned advocate for clean air and water, because it really breaks my heart that too many of our neighbors are experiencing the very worst impacts of the oil and gas industry within this township that I now call home. Forget about enjoying the outdoors. Residents are unable to find peace even within their homes because of the noise and vibrations that no house can shelter them from. Oil and gas activity is too close to people's homes, and there are not enough protections in place to ensure the water that people are drinking is clean, that the air they breathe isn't hurting them, or to keep disturbances at a bearable level. We're also lacking measures for accountability, the small comfort of knowing that when things go wrong, there will be a way to be made right. So I'm here to raise just a couple of important questions. I've been looking through the ordinance as I sat here. I hope that this is, you know, enough for right now, but I will be submitting formal comments at the hearing next week. I would encourage you to implement increased setback distances of 3,000 feet from the well pad to protected structures like homes, schools, and churches. 1,000 feet is simply not sufficient to protect our neighbors, and measuring from the well head as opposed to the well pad fails to account for the trucks and machinery putting off noise and pollution surrounding the well bore itself. I'd like you to consider requiring operators to limit the noise that they create by improving and expanding metrics for measuring sound impacts, which I heard is going to be part of that proposal, but also considering things like limiting, or setting standard operating times, respecting important days like Sundays or state-declared holidays so that people can have peace when they're celebrating with their families, utilizing the best available machinery like electric motors as opposed to diesel that produce the least amount of noise, and also requiring the installation of sound walls. I would also like to request that you require operators to expand their water sampling to a 3,000-foot radius around the well pad and require operators to test wells when requested by a resident. And furthermore, I do see some mention in here of an air quality study, environmental impact analysis. I applaud both of those. I want to look more into detail on those. But any kind of study, an ongoing study of the impacts that are occurring in real time should require third-party air monitoring that includes measures for VOCs and PM 2.5. And that should be specifically in the ordinance. I think the full list of recommendations I'd like to provide will be again entered onto the record at the public hearing, but I also want to echo the suggestion of one of my neighbors who spoke earlier, that the township should consider reviewing each specific well, not the whole pad. Oil and gas operators communicate with DEP in terms of stages of development, and there are general estimates for how long each phase will last. So the conditions that we put on where and when fracking can occur should consider the real-time start and completion of those stages, because each stage brings its own set of complications and potential for pollution. And then I'll just conclude by saying that as a resident of Cecil Township, I want to stress the urgency of addressing these issues. It's not only the board's obligation under the PA Constitution, but it's also just the right thing to do for our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to offer comment?
Everybody, A.C. Roland, short person, sorry. A.C. Roland, 52 Sycamore Street. So in regards to some of what's been going on from the meeting, they highly encouraged, as you know, you were there for us to come and speak with you guys directly. So first question, what came from the seven-day line in the sand? It was my understanding that there were going to be representatives from Range here, some lawyers or something of that nature. What happened from the seven days?
So it's not my understanding that anyone from Range was going to be here tonight. We're in communications. We've been having discussions. They've proposed certain mitigation. We are not at a place where there is a resolution from the board. I don't know what the next step is as I sit here today, but I can tell you, there's been a lot of back and forth and proposed mitigation that, we just don't know if it's enough yet.
Right, but wasn't that one of the main concerns in how we got to the seven-day line in the sand is that every time that we brought it up, oh, we're going to get to it. Oh, we're working on it. Oh, this guy's on vacation. Oh, you know, it was always some kind of my best friend uncle's dog's funeral as to why they couldn't come and address issues. So it seems to me that you, we, are being ran over by the oil companies and their big deep pockets. And even if you go online, and I myself have tried this last week, to interact in a very respectful way with people that are on that side or this side, because I'm kind of in the middle. There ought to be a third choice of some type of, you know, what do they say about a compromise? Nobody's really happy, but it gets what needs to get accomplished? I mean, can't we get to that third position without having the hate or, you know, and then this is the question is, anytime that you bring up any information from any state, be it from scientists and colleagues right here in the state of Pennsylvania, from some of the best colleges, from some of the best scientific minds right here in our state that have any information that contradicts the hand-fed, spoon-fed, here's the wells, go take a tour, here's our video, it, excuse me, it's shot down as fabrications, lies, you know, libtard information. So as, I want to know, what do you guys go by? What is your unbiased, how do you get to where you get to write these laws? Do you go by just what the oil company gives you and their recommendations? Because it seems like no matter how many people for how many years come up with any alternative plans, it not only doesn't get entertained, it gets laughed out of here. So I thought that was the point of the seven days is to stop that. So how, what is your, what is your information study? What are your water results? What are your, where do you get this information from so that it doesn't seem biased that this comes from the oil company or this comes from the libtards? As, you know, you know what I'm saying? Not to be disrespectful, libtards or whatever.
I'm not sure I understand the exact question. In terms of drafting the ordinance?
Yeah.
So in terms of drafting the laws...
Like, where do you base your information?
Right, so there are various bodies of laws that tell a township what it can and cannot do. There are certain things a township can regulate. There are certain things a township cannot regulate. There are certain things that are what's called preempted by other bodies, where the township then doesn't have the ability to legislate. There's lots of case law out there. There are laws, there are regulations. So in terms of drafting an oil and gas ordinance, the goal here is to find as many protections that the board can pass and hopefully will stand, because, you know, this will likely be challenged, on a substantive ability challenge, and pass muster, pass muster from the courts to say, okay, the things that you've proposed here, you're allowed to do township. It's difficult, because townships actually have very little ability in this area to legislate. It's this whole, you've probably heard it, you can do the where, not the how.
Right.
So once you start getting into things, you know, like frankly, air and water, they'll say, well, township, you don't have the ability to legislate that. The strongest and best way, the best protections a township has is to regulate the where. So if they want it to be, if the board wants it to be in, you know, less residential areas, then they can, there's ways to do it. You could do it by zoning. You could do it by an overlay district. Currently, this model is an overlay district. And what they did was they increased the setback. So previously, it was 500 feet. They increased that to 1,000 feet from protected structures, which, you know, shrunk the areas where, you know, you can have potential oil and gas drilling in the township. So it's one way to do it.
Sure.
The other way to do it is saying, you know, you may do it in these zones, but not these zones. And that is from the township's perspective, the most strength that they have, the where.
So let me get some clarity. So because of the limited, the townships basically, hands are tied, and that even if we as a community or as a township pass some ordinance, some law, or revise something, I am, at least this is what I'm being told, is that not only does it not matter, but everything is grandfathered in under these old contracts, under old technology, under old science, under not-current readings, and really relatively high numbers compared to other states of where they are that they do fracking. It's almost like there are states that you can't build a home if it's by a power, you know, a power line tripod, because it's been proven now that that creates cancers and brain tumors, Erb-Brockovich, you know what I mean? So there has to be some leadway that as technology and as we get new information and as we get new facts, that we have to be willing to have a caveat in these contracts that per new information, new science, new technology, that they can then be reassessed, and these contracts can be adjusted. And like you say, or like she said, $1,000 as a fine? What is that, per hour, per incident?
Day.
Per week?
Per day.
Okay, so, oh my God, when I lived in California, people, that's like a fine for a parking thing, because parking was so expensive, it was cheaper to schedule in your weekly tickets at, you know, 800 bucks a month than it was to go rent a parking space. That's not, that's asinine. That's laughable. And to me, that's the oil companies and our supervisors and our zoning commissioner failing us, because $1,000 to a multi-billion dollar company who gets multimillion dollars in subsidies, that's a joke. That's insulting. But we'll go past that. So my next question is, there's been a lot of concern with these flare burn-offs. And the big push and everything that I'm trying to learn about this, it's done for a safety precaution to eliminate back pressures, to keep the well workers safe, blah, blah, blah. My question is this, how is it that during the day, they might have two flare-ups, two flare pops, four flare pops in a 10-hour day, but come 10:30 at night, Jack, it's starting to happen every 45 minutes? Every 45 minutes? So what happens at the nighttime that's not happening at the daytime? That they then have to start popping these flares for safety purposes? I don't, I don't understand. Can there not be some clarity in any new contracts and in these grandfather clauses of operating hours? Any other, if we had a subdivision coming in, if we had even roadwork coming in, they would be limited to hours of operation? There has to be some give.
So I can tell you, this is a bit of sneak preview, the board is considering adding some provisions that would restrict hours for certain of the activities, not the fracking, but for certain of the other activities. We'll probably have that in advance for the hearing.
How about every person that showed up here tonight that gave you an email address? Will you email each one of us that showed, came here and showed up, any of that preempted stuff before our next meeting, so that we, the people who are actually showing up and getting involved and not just being keyboard warriors, are actually here talking to you, have a chance to actually review it instead of getting 14 pages as we walk in the door?
Yeah, well, this ordinance should be up on the website.
Well, I'm talking about what you were talking about, that these next steps.
Oh, yeah, yeah. It wouldn't be 14 pages. It would just be adding in if, you know...
Well, whatever that you guys come up with, if we, the people, the, how many of us are there? 10 of us here? If us 10 people can just get an email?
Yeah, I can tell you this, if there's a direction... Yeah, I can tell you this, if there's a direction on those particular provisions, I'll have them repost that before you walk in, you know, repost it before the meeting.
Okay, thank you, maybe a day before, so there's some?
Yeah, I just, I, it's not there yet.
If we want something on the agenda, we have to have it in by Tuesday at, at six, or whatever, can we not put that same provision on you guys? That if you guys are gonna present something, you know, fourteen pages, or whatever this is tonight, and drop it on us, and there's no way that any of us can give it due diligence to actually look over what's being presented in eight minutes before the meeting starts? So, that would be my, my request.
Thank you, this was posted on the Cecil Township website.
Okay, I was talking to Jack about that earlier, apparently I was looking at the other link, I guess it's the YouTube link, I didn't realize that this was also, because last time I went to that site, I guess it was down because we were hacked, or whatever, so, I, there's some confusion. But Jack, thank you sir, for, showed me a different link, so, but thank you. So, my next question is, is there a way, because one lady that talked last week about her property values, she would love to get out of her home. She, she, she can't take it anymore, she, she can't take not sleep, she can't take, nobody wants her house. So, if there is a provision in any new contracts, if they present such unstable, unliv- livable, unenjoyable opportunities at these people's homes, like that, the new lady said she didn't even know about the wellheads. It was kinda snuck in, her realtor didn't have to, it's, if you buy a house and somebody dies in it, the realtor has to tell you, you know what I mean? I, I think that there has to be some transparency there. You know, could, is there a way to get something like that into our contracts?
No, I think generally what you're talking about sound like private causes of action, generally. I can't really see how that could be part of, of legislation.
What about having a kitty that they have to put aside, that if these people can't sell their homes and they want to, that, just like they have to be bonded for, what, what was the number, twenty-five?
Twenty-five million per occurrence.
Maybe there has to be a separate bond, that if people, if they, if they're just no, no way out of it, these people aren't stuck with upside-down mortgages, because nobody will buy their property that was not the property that they bought, when they bought their property, you know what I mean?
I, I understand your concept, I, what I'm saying is, I can't imagine, I've never seen and can't imagine a scenario where that would pass muster. It sounds, again, more like a pri- you have a private cause of action against another entity.
Class action suit?
Yeah, or a private cause of action against a company, or, yeah.
Uh, we've gotta find a good ambulance chase, or anybody online, hey, might wanna call us. The certification, um, I wanted some clarity, because I got a lot of pushback online, even tonight. At the last meeting, we talked about how originally it was approved for eight wellheads. And then somehow, there was some other backside deal, or additional meeting, or something, it went to fourteen. And then at the last meeting, they talked about it, and I think you were even in on the discussion, that technically, they could go up to, say, thirty?
No, so, I did go back and look at this, I believe you're talking about the Augustine pad, that. So, you have to look at the application, and what was actually approved by the board.
Right, it was eight.
Was, I believe, approved for fourteen. The initial approval.
Okay, because the one I saw that got approved, and that was up, said for eight. And then, uh, a couple of years later, it came back and then went to fourteen. So, what prevents them, under this grandfather clause, to come back in and go, okay, we're gonna go additional eight more? Or additional ten more? Wha- what is our protection from that?
The protection is basically what is approved by the board. So, an application is made, and it's how, how it is approved. My understanding is that they have not exceeded wellpads that were approved by the board in their application.
And that number is fourteen, you're saying, the cap?
If you're talking about Augustine, I believe it's fourteen, but, yeah, I would, I would look for verification. It sounds like someone here has verified too, but.
And the other one?
I, I don't know, I didn't pull that one, because I think we were talking about the Augustine one at the last meeting.
Okay, so that, that is done on the front end?
So, when they come in with their application, their applica- it's very detailed, and it says, this is what we're applying for, you know, this many wellheads. Now, we might not drill them all at one time, and in fact, I don't think I've ever seen that. But, but this is how many total we're applying for, and that's part of the approval process.
And so, what happens if you guys got a, not you guys, but we, as a community, we as, uh, board members, we as zoning people, got a backbone, and said, no, you get eight. You don't get to come in and get fourteen, no, y- you get eight, and this is your timeframe. You can't stretch it out for six, eight, ten years. You can't have, like, like she said, come and put a shovel in day three hundred and sixty-four, and say, okay? You know, I, is, I really think that that ought to be something that ought to be mandated in any new contracts. And this new negotiation that we're trying to have, because we drew the line in the sand with seven days, why can't that be along the lines as important as having them not do the nighttime drilling, and, and flare popping all night, and using diesel generators? It's gonna cost them some money to run it electric, you know? I mean, can, can we not get some kind of?
It sounds like some of these things are in the ambient noise with the DBA and DBC, and the hours that you had mentioned of the draft of that.
So, many of those last couple things you talked about are. The flaring that you've mentioned, I can tell you, I believe we have no ability to govern flaring.
Can we find out why it happens so much more at night?
I, I don't know, I mean, I'm, I, I can ask Range, certainly, like, the township can too.
Thank you.
But, that's an area, again, which is, uh, falls in the category of wellpad operations.
Okay.
It's, it's pretty clear, I think even that very issue, we tried to insert a condition. At one point, the board tried to insert a condition on one of the approvals about flaring, and I believe that one was shut down.
Okay. And, almost done, two more. I, I noticed, okay, um, our governor used to be our, uh, Attorney General. And he did a lot of studies in what was going on in these neighborhoods, and with his constituents, especially the ones right here in Western Pennsylvania. So, in two thousand twenty-four, January two thousand twenty-four, now that he's governor, he implemented some new guidelines. Um, can I ask that you guys get up to date with whatever these new guidelines were that our governor put into action, from his, his investigative studies and his work as the Attorney General? But as of January twenty-four, there were new guidelines and new laws specifically to protect residents and enjoyment of properties. Can you please, because that's something legally that we have a better standing with them, if we go with something that the governor himself has already enacted?
Much of what the governor has enacted is going to fall under DEP or EPA regulations.
Okay.
Most likely DEP, or Department of Conservation, Natural, Natu- Natural Resources, excuse me. So, we, of course, will adhere, and we, we would want to adhere to anything that the state has governed.
Well, maybe we should get a grassroots movement going to get the governor down here. And maybe we'll get the governor, since our board wouldn't go stay the night in one of them's houses, maybe we get the governor to come down and spend the night, and see what he thinks. And see if he can't get on our side, because it, I'm telling you, a lot of us feel like that it, it's, the Cecil laughing stocks, you know? And that's not our page, that's theirs, and that's the oil company's page, so, I mean, you know, it, it seems backwards. Um, and lastly, because I know we wanna get out of here, um, um, yeah, so, with that one thousand feet adjustment for, um, any new, new contracts, or is that part of the new negotiation we're having with them? And, go ahead.
No, that would be a new overlay district.
Okay, so, um, my question is this, um, what about for areas that, school, daycares, old folks centers, that kinda stuff? In other states, it is a minimum of three thousand. I've even seen, found some states that are up to thirty-five hundred when it comes to children's schools, hospitals, and nursing homes, daycares, that kinda stuff. So, I mean, Pennsylvania's giving the oil companies a really sweet deal. They don't get charged any tax for extraction of any of the products. We're the only state in the nation that does that for them. Plus, we give them subsidies off of our tax dollars, on an industry that makes billions in profits. Billions with a B, and they are, by next year, projected to go to the T-trillion level with the amount of, of new wells that they're doing. So, that seems, um, a bit excessive. So, if they're making that much money, why do we have to subsidize them? And who does that go to? Is that like a governor question, a state question?
I think you'd be able to look on the state website and see, as far as what the impact fee has paid for. And I know that it has also been published in the Observer Reporter, as far as what that has impacted for Washington County.
Right, the impact is still something that they pay for in other states. In addition to, they get a tax for removing it out of the ground. We are the only state in the nation, they still pay all those DPA, DP charges, they still pay all these other fees in every other state but Pennsylvania. So, that's a real sweetheart deal, so it seems like that they would be real interested and want to work with us, to prevent us from doing cla- class action suits and grassroots movements, and, and things like that. And the last thing I just wanna say is, um, thank you guys, and we appreciate all that you guys do, and putting up with our craziness, and our questions, and taking the time to listen to us. And I just would like everybody here to give, everybody here a thank you. And Jack, you're in that mess too, buddy. So, thank you, and if you come to Legion, I'll buy you a soda pop.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make comment?
I'm sorry, this is really, really quick, I promise it's gonna take like ten seconds. Um, I just wanted to ask about that electric generator comment, is that something that's in there now?
I'm sorry, was there a question?
Electric generator question that I brought up about. Yeah, there seemed to be a question about, was there something in the ordinance now about using electric generators versus diesel? Or natural gas? There seemed to be, we had gotten some communication from Range that they, it was louder than they expected, because they couldn't use the electric generators. Is there, I was just wondering.
Right, that's a good point, I, I'll have to check this, I, that one I don't know off the top of my head. But I can get you an answer on that.
The only other thing was, there's, you know, people over in Timber Run are kind of taken aback by the flaring. Um, and somebody brought up, I know, and I think in one of the well pads, we had asked for an emergency notification system, and one of the conditions. I was just wondering if maybe we could, like, have people subscribe who are interested in knowing what's going on at the well pad, and like, for example, if flaring is happening, um, that, that they could tell people, yes, it's flaring, it's not like a forest fire or something, um, just to kinda set some people at ease regarding, um, things that are happening. If there's rather gonna be a big disruption, as, like, right now with the, big, moving the big rig into, uh, Augustine, there's, there's a hundred trucks going up there, bringing up that equipment. So, things like, hey, we're gonna be moving the big rig on this day, you know, avoid this area, or flaring's happening, or we're, we're pressure testing the, um, the, the one time they were doing pressure testing, it was like, like insanely loud, and only for a few seconds, but I thought my house was gonna blow up. Like, times when they know things are gonna be disruptive to people, maybe just, like, let people subscribe and have them notify the community. That's just another thought, and then I'm really done, sorry.
Jack, it looks like we have a civic-ready alert system already in place in the township. So, if you're talking about the operator notifying residents within a certain area, that would be something that you would want to talk with the operator about. As far as anything that could be grandfathered in, that would not be addressed by this potential ordinance.
But maybe they would do it voluntarily.
Maybe if it's part of the negotiations that were now going on with the seven-day trial run, trying to talk to them and find some common, common ground.
They're trying to be the good neighbor that they are.
But their money where their mouth is, kinda, that's, you know.
I think it wasn't one of the conditions of one of the pads, I'm, I'm almost a hundred percent sure.
Which one, which thing?
Emergency notification.
That is, uh, communication between Range Resources and our police department.
Yeah, I remember a lot of discussion about it, because there were a lot of different ways to go at it, and there were some concerns about it being, um, you know, at odds with different systems. And I forget, and I'm not sure exactly what ultimately got into the agreement.
Yeah, um, as a, Range had a, um, uh, archaic system.
Okay.
And, um, they continued to use it with, in conjunction to what, um, we have as civic-ready, uh, more for emergency broadcasting. So, if it gets to the point where they need to contact the police, that's between Range's EMS and, um, our police department. So, I mean, there's not a broadcast system for everybody, unless a member of the police department goes on and puts it out there at whatever time.
Okay. Is there anybody else that would like to give comment? Okay, with that being said, um, we have had the past couple of weeks to review this ordinance, this proposed ordinance and revisions, and, um, I know there are a lot of things that we can get into. And, um, I know, Lauren, I hope you don't mind me calling you on the spot, but I am going to say, you had a lot of comments that I thought were very applicable, very detailed, and very insightful. And I would appreciate if you would share some of those for the record.
Absolutely. So, I think I wanna make some observations first, before I dive into the comments that I had, based on what we heard this evening. One, it, it really appears that noise is a very big issue, um, to the residents. And I think it's important, um, that we have a noise expert, a third party, to present in some fashion, really to speak to what's in the ordinance, and how it potentially could improve the situation. I'm not a noise expert myself, uh, so I, I get confused easily, especially reading the proposed amendments, and, and how they might improve the situation. So, a recommendation that I have would be to have a noise expert, a third-party noise expert, of course, come and talk to us about, uh, what this new ordinance means.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna interrupt. Gretchen, I know that you had mentioned that the township had spoken with an expert last week. And it would, it would be wonderful if there would be a way to incorporate, uh, whether it's quotations or citations of information from that noise expert in the ordinance, in any way, shape, or form, because there are so few experts, particularly in DBC.
Right, so, yeah, and that would be up to the township. I mean, I know they, they did hire an expert to do some measurements when there were recent complaints, and that's the person who we've spoken to as well. So, that'd be up to them if they wanted to bring him in to.
It's just simply a recommend- recommendation.
Yeah.
The other thing I'd point out is, we only received this map as a planning commission to review at twelve fifty-six this afternoon. And I know we got the ordinance a couple of weeks in advance, but it was really hard to look at the proposed ordinance and review it in, in a, in a fashion that would be adequate without having the map. So, I would just make that, that observation. Because it's signi- it's significant, and it, and the proposed ordinance referred to the map that we didn't have. Gretchen, you mentioned that there, um, from the version that we were sent, and maybe I, I'm confused, that, that there were additional updates to the noise section, um, in it, from the version that we've seen, or that we were provided, is that true, or do we have the most current version?
Yeah, it's not finalized yet. Again, this was pushed out very quickly, we were still working with the expert on the noise pieces, but I do have some language that, um, you know, I think at the hearing, that the board will want to incorporate, related to the proc- like, the third-party measurements, um, some specifications on sound level metering, and, like, for example, um, in section E one, nineteen E one, when it talks about noise, we're just, we would make it clear that the baseline would be, um, taken in accordance with all applicable American National Standard Institute standards, specifications, measurements, and procedures. So, adding some detail on, um, what, you know, what standard we're using, adding the included, including A-weighting sound, and C-weighted sound level. um, adding the included, including A-weighting sound and C-weighted sound levels as specified by ANSI specifications for sound level meters. And then the DBA and DBC would both be included, uh, under the fluctuation section, which is 19... One, E2, E3. And he, he recommended adding in, so, um, under the notes, um, under the permitted increases, he recommended adding in that additionally, any increase shall only be permitted as specified herein irrespective of whether the increase is measured in DBA or DBC. For example, an operator shall not be permitted to allow an increase of 10 DBA for five minutes, and then an increase of 10 DBC for five minutes within the same hour.
Okay, so that's a significant difference from what we have in front of us.
Yeah, like, that's an extra line added to the notes section under.
Could, could we get the most current version?
Yeah, I don't know if this is, the, everyone's on board with all these two. I mean, I've just been adding to it as I've been getting information. It, like I said, it moved pretty quickly. I anticipate more than one hearing.
Okay. That's good to know, I, I didn't know that either.
Yeah, if, if, if the board says, yeah, post these new additions, we'll post them as soon as possible, even if it's before the hearing. I'll just confirm with them.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
The only other observation I had from the, the comments, and one that kind of rang true to me is, you know, there are instances in other townships where the development of the well pad, approved well pad and wells occurs, and, and, um, and certainly wells are developed on a pad based on market conditions, and they, they certainly, um, have the right to get approval for a number of wells on a pad, not only at the local level, but at the state level. Um, but it's also important for home builders to be transparent. We, we approve an awful lot of home developments. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with home developments, they're, they're wonderful. People move into our township, and, and we should embrace that. But in some fashion, the home builder should be transparent as well. Um, we all want to know what we're moving into, and I think that's an important thing. Now, again, I'm, I'm, I'm just a dumb engineer, and I'm, I'm not an attorney, but there's got to be some way that we could have some transparency there. We, we, uh, we always ask the oil and gas industry to be as transparent as possible, and certainly they should, but home builders with the amount of development that we bring in, into the township, uh, there, there are, there are significant investments from private individuals when they're buying a home, a first home, uh, and, and they should understand what the playing field is like before they sign on the dotted line. So, that's an observation to protect people that are moving here.
Yeah, I think a good, um, response to that is this, the public process that is these approvals is, you know, it's helpful, and that's what gives people notice of what's coming down the pike, because of course, you know, there's always a public process when something is approved, but then once it's approved, they have time to actually develop. So, um, it's currently two years, and I, and, you know, if you come in in between those two things and you weren't around for the approval, and then all of a sudden it looks like something's going up, um, it's, it's, you just really have to, like, look to see what was approved and what's coming down the pike, but, um, and keeping those expirations as reasonable as possible so that things aren't sitting out there for a reasonably long time.
Well, and a lot of those are dictated by the state DEP. They, they have five years before the, the, the permit for their, um, earth disturbance, which would be the well pad construction expires. It's very difficult to get one of those renewed at the DEP. They have one year to drill a well from, from the, the approval of a, a well permit, and they're able to get a one, two-year extension. After that, they're done. So, there is, there is a shelf life to well pads and wells at the state level that I think we need to observe as well.
Oh, yeah, that's all applicable, and that's, you know, again, we don't have jurisdiction over that, and that governs them, and, yeah, I, the only thing we can say is, once we give you that approval, what is your runway until that approval expires? And then, yes, they have multiple other layers of approvals that they have to comply with.
Right, right. Um, the other comments I have are just personal comments, just looking at the ordinance, um, from my perspective. Um, there are a lot of new definitions that are associated with this ordinance, including the very, uh, important to the residents ambient noise level. We, we really need to source where these, these, um, definitions came from. Um, I think it's important to understand that we're grabbing ordinances from acceptable documents or other places, whether it's EPA or a professional noise association definition for ambient noise. I, I get confused even as a technical person on, uh, where these came from. And I think that's important to have as well for, for a, a good ordinance. The critical impact areas definition, I think, is important. And it's in addition, um, Pennsylvania DEP with their earth disturbance permit that these operators have to obtain has a great definition on many of these areas that we're talking about slopes and mines and, uh, highly erodible soils. It's a good definition that we could incorporate and reference, uh, within our ordinance that would protect, uh, in those areas. But I, I would say, as just an overarching comment, that these new definitions, and even the existing ones, we should probably look at, um, sourcing them, or at least making sure that they are in line with professional, other professional documents. Uh, our current definition for fracture or fracking is way out of date, and in fact, probably inaccurate altogether. So, that would be a recommendation that I have. Um, there are certain parts of the ordinance that are out of date with current state and federal regulations, and I think that's important to take into account. Unconventional operators are no longer to have open, allowed to have open waste impoundments. Uh, everything has to be above-ground storage. Uh, that's as of 2016. Um, Pennsylvania DEP also governs reporting for spills and releases. For any spills that become releases that are greater than five gallons, they have to be reported to the department within 24 hours. Certainly, the new ordinance, uh, the proposed ordinance says that even non-emergency spills, which is an undefined term, should be reported to the township in four hours. This seems borderline a waste of time, especially if it's a non-emergency, whatever that means, and within four hours. So, I would say simply reflecting what, uh, operators are obligated to do under the state regulations would be sufficient, uh, for five gallons off containment, which is very small, to be reported in 24 hours. There's a lot of detail that goes into the construction of access drives that I believe is governed by PENDOT and PADEP standards. You look at the proposed ordinance, that goes into great detail of pavement thicknesses and sections and aggregate and all of that stuff. And then that's fine, uh, but we want to make sure that that isn't consistent with what, uh, acceptable requirements of PENDOT for roadway constructions, construction are, doesn't conflict with that to create confusion. Uh, traffic impact studies, you know, I, I think are applicable in, in some cases. However, they're, they, they should not be, um, required in all, all instances of development. Uh, PENDOT, even on state roads, does not require a full traffic impact study unless, uh, an operation or a proposed development is going to exceed a level of, of traffic or a level of service of hours. And so, I think it's important to note that. Um, there is a new section requiring a formal environmental impact analysis, and I'm, I'm generally okay with that. However, I think that should be limited when, uh, to when the project is potentially affecting, uh, sensitive waterways and wetlands, endangered species, and/or historical structures to be in line with state and federal requirements and regulations, and not supersede, uh, tho, those, uh, those requirements. Hydrologic studies is a new requirement within the ordinance. Uh, these studies are typically submitted to Pennsylvania DEP as part of the earth disturbance permit that has to be approved prior to development of the well pad. And I think that's something as simple as just obtaining it from the operator once they receive approval. Water withdrawal plans are also something that's approved by the Pennsylvania DEP. And Pennsylvania DEP has, uh, has an obligation to share that with local municipalities and townships in the areas where water is being withdrawn. And so, if that's not happening, I think that's something that we ought to, uh, we ought to have a discussion with DEP about. Open drill pits and, uh, like I said, impoundments are no longer used slash allowed by Pennsylvania DEP for unconventional well sites, certainly something that, uh, we want to make sure that we're consistent with the current regulations. There is a new section on site reclamation that is somewhat duplicative of what an operator's required to do in accordance with their earth disturbance permit, which is approved by the Pennsylvania DEP. There are specific conditions of the permit for how the site should be reclaimed and restored, and this section should simply reference, uh, that requirement underneath that permit. Lastly, uh, upstream or well pad developers are their own entities in some cases and companies? And typically, different companies are building the pipelines or getting gas, uh, to market via distribution. And so, within the ordinance, there is a section on gas distribution. And at the time of application, uh, for a well pad or, or to drill a well, uh, another company may be in charge of building the pipeline, and it may not be known at that time, which could create difficulty during the application process. That's all I have.
Thank you.
And I have a cop, I, I have a copy.
Great, thank you.
Can I ask one quick question? Some of that information, we have not had a chance to really go over. You had some great points. When is your next meeting that we can come? After we've had a chance to review, would that be the next board meeting? Or is there gonna be a sidebar done after this meeting? Or wha, what's the next step after we go through this large packet that we've received tonight? Because you had some great points, but I also saw a couple that I was like, mm, biting my tongue back here. Hard for my, me to do.
Jack, I believe you are aware of what's next on the schedule.
Uh, Gretchen met, mentioned there might be additional, uh, you know, hearings and that type of thing. I mean, after tonight, um, technically, it should go to the board, but I think there's, um, some things that still need to be addressed, so, um, as of right now, I, I mean, I, I don't see this going on the agenda for the April board meeting right now.
Personally.
Hearings on April 3rd.
Yeah, the hearings after the April meeting.
Yeah, so they wouldn't be acting on this in April.
Yeah, they're just having the hearing on April 3rd.
Okay.
The first year.
So, probably what would happen is, you have a public hearing, you have comments at the public hearing, right? There's any changes, come back to, to the planning commission one more time, right?
Right, certainly if there's anything significant, it's gonna come back to the planning commission, uh, and then have another, another round.
Yeah, I, I don't really, yeah, I don't really have a comfort level of voting one way or the other just based on a lot of the changes and a lot of the recommendations that we have.
I'm confused there, so it's, April 3rd is the next opportunity?
Correct.
And then from there, whatever is on your table, what have you, comes back to the next meeting? Does, what is this, um, board's next meeting?
So, the board of supervisors is gonna.
Planning meets the third Thursday of every month.
But the board of supervisors will hold a hearing, it's just a hearing on April 3rd. They can choose to hold multiple hearings.
Right.
Um, and they might after that first hearing, and they might make little changes after each hearing. They might make more significant changes. If there's anything that rises to the level of significant, they have to re-advertise then, and, um, so there, there is going to be more process. I can't tell you how it's all gonna play out, this, this board will, might be looking at it again, um.
Okay, thanks, it was kind of ambiguous, ambiguous, and even the last meeting was not, it wasn't out there until late, late, late. It was kind of late on the draw to understand what was gonna be covered, because it, there were some people saying it wasn't happening, and then it said it was, and then, like I said, I couldn't find the agenda, so there was a lot of things kind of up in the air with tonight's meeting.
But from a process standpoint, maybe describe when an ordinance goes through a process. This is an ordinance, not like any other ordinance, like a parking ordinance or anything else. So, it has to follow a process whereby the planning commission gets the materials, which they did 30 days in advance, right?
Well, yeah, we, they can't, so the board can't even vote until 45 days. I mean, and again, no one's voting on the 3rd, because the 3rd is just a hearing.
Okay.
Um, but yes, it goes to the county planning commission, this planning commission, they're gonna get comments from all of these places, they're gonna get comments from the public at the hearing, um, and then they're gonna decide, okay, we want to make, you know, this change and that change, and again, if it's.
Thank you for that clarity, it's just, this was a fat pack and to lock in the door, and it was kind of overwhelming, and so it's so we know that we, as voters and taxpayers, are gonna have an actual chance to kind of go through the minutia of it and come back with actual questions regarding what's actually on the paper. So, thank you.
Yes, that, I, there will be a lot of process associated with this of, you know, this, an ordinance of this magnitude is, and gets a lot of attention, um, it, it'll have some process.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
So, you know, I put up the, uh, what has been posted on the website since, uh, we put it in the Washington Observer this past Monday, okay?
Barbara, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I think Lauren covered it all.
Sorry, Barb.
Lauren, I appreciate it, I appreciate the, the technical aspect that you're able to bring. Um, and I, I would say, um, the, the easiest summary that I could say from what you had shared technically was, the township is doing a great job looking after its residents while also, uh, needing to make sure that we look at it to say, we're not going against the MPC, and we're not going against anything that is governed by the state or federal regulations. So, with that being said, um, where my comfort level is, is to, um, table this ordinance for future discussion after the hearing, when we see and receive edits, and to take into account the copious amounts of comments and information we received tonight from our residents. Uh, but that is where I am personally. Uh, where, where are you on making a motion? Uh, either of you, are you, are you on the same page, or?
Yeah, a, a, again, we, we, we have, we, we've made a lot of comments, we've heard from the residents, we've made some observations. Uh, we, we don't even have, um, through, through, this is an evolving process, so I'm not, I'm not placing blame, but we don't have everything in front of us from a factual standpoint for us to make a reasonable, um, vote at this time. So, I would, uh, if we're looking to make a motion, I would make a motion to table until we have some additional information and details and guidance, uh, from the hearings coming up.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Still moved? That being said, Jack, do we have anything on correspondence or announcements? Okay, any further discussion items from residents? Okay, if there are no other questions, concerns, or comments, I will make a motion to adjourn at 8:29 PM.
Second.